Meeting to order. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. We have two items on our agenda. The first of which is a continuing conversation about the county fair. And so we had a presentation related to the recommendations of a task force that we set up. Kathleen Norris talked us through those recommendations. And so now we have Tanya with us. Tanya Elliott, she is with the Ag Society and also heavily involved, obviously, with the Hamilton County Fair. So welcome, Tanya, to the meeting today. And Steve Johns is going to give us an overview briefly of the recommendations that were brought forward a couple of weeks ago. And then, Tanya, we're going to kick it over to you to get your perspective on the recommendations and try to figure out a path forward that is something that everybody, you know, will be part of. So with that, I'd like to kick it over to Steve.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Steve Johns. I'm a county planner with the Planning and Development Department and had the pleasure of working with the task force for about almost the past year. And, Tanya, we are so glad for her to be here today. But there were two official representatives from the Agricultural Society on the task force. And Tanya has come on as a board member that just really go-getter and has already helped implement several of the recommendations that we made to the commission a couple of weeks ago. Just as a reminder, some of those recommendations, we really led off with the idea that there's organizational capacity issue, that this idea of governance is something that we really want to try to put a finger on. That the folks that have been on the Agricultural Society, many have been there for years and decades, maybe. And there's just folks that have done their share. And now we need some new blood on that fair board, as we call it, the Agricultural Society. And then we can get into the real work, the real work of, hey, freshening up that site, making everything look a little nicer, function a bit better, do some things like social media and outreach and communications. So all the kind of nuts and bolts things that you really can't get to unless you've got a good functioning group of folks that have a diverse skill set and that are really ready to dig in and get the work done. And so I think that, again, that's why we're glad to have Tanya here today because her skill set is a piece of the puzzle. She's been able to really clean up the financials that were kind of not in a great shape. And that's been a big help. She also has dove in there with a bunch of new events. So that's another piece of the equation is making the fairground more active, not just the county fair in August, but also a bunch of other events over the course of the year. And even in COVID times, they've been pretty successful in getting some of those scheduled out there. And also, the final thing I would mention is on web and social media presence. The website has had a bit of a refresh and the social media presence is much better and larger than it had been in the past. And a lot of that is due to Tanya's work and some of the other new board members. So those are a few things I wanted to highlight. I also, while I had the floor, wanted to highlight how others could help with the fair. There's a, the website is HamiltonCountyFair.com. And there you can become a member of the Agricultural Society. That was one of the recommendations of the task force that was implemented before the report came out. So we like to see those kinds of things get done, where you can sign up to be a member right there online. It used to be you had to go down to the fairgrounds and do it very manually. Now you can go ahead and do that online. And I also wanted to remind folks that the fair, the Agricultural Society's annual meeting is, Tanya, correct me if I'm wrong on this, the second Saturday of November. Uh-oh, we've got it changed. I knew I was.
That's the second Saturday of November is when our election is.
Okay, thank you.
Our meetings are the second Thursday of every month at seven P. M.
Thank you, Tanya. So I was trying to highlight that election. That's why I might have been spoke. So the election is on that second Saturday of November. That's the fourteenth of November. And that's from one to four at the fairgrounds. So that is a piece of this recommendation. How do you get new folks on the fair? Well, you got to show up and actually vote for them and have them get on that board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tanya. I think she has some reactions to what the task force report said and probably can summarize some of the things she's been up to.
Thanks, Steve. So before, Tanya, before we start, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for your service, especially as it relates to the fair board and all that you're doing out on the fairgrounds. I mean, the recommendations seem pretty comprehensive. I know a lot of time was put in by all of the members of the task force. So thanks so much for participating. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Our main goal is to make the fairgrounds a three hundred and sixty-five day event center for rent, for agriculture events as well. There, I will agree that there are some things that need to be done at the fairgrounds. And unfortunately, COVID hit. And so we kind of got stunned and we, you know, we hit the deck running in November. And a lot of the things that the task force, their first points were things that we were already working on. So it kind of went hand in hand. Nothing that the task force said was taken as, oh my, we can't do this. We don't want to do this. We're not going to listen. Some of them were just logistics on how we were going to accomplish those things. So we've taken off little pieces as the task force put in recommendations, even at their meetings, and tried to implement them as quickly as possible. I know that, you know, one of the main things is it was the fencing around the fairgrounds. Unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do about that fencing. It has to be there. We have to be able to keep secure the over one hundred and sixty-five-year-old buildings on the property. And because we are where we are, we, we have a tendency to have a lot of people who want to just like trespass through the fairgrounds. Do I agree that we need new fencing that doesn't have barbed wire at the top? I do. Unfortunately, we've been talking with the engineer's office and they're, they're trying to find the logistics of exactly who is responsible for replacing the fencing, if it's us, if it's the, the county. It's one of those, it's one of those things. So that is first and foremost on our mind is to get all of that fencing replaced. I wish that I could say to you, we had a million dollars in the bank and could fix everything at the fairgrounds that needed to be fixed and that we could get a, you know, a beautiful fancy entrance like is projected in the recommendation. Don't really see that happening on our own. But we're, we're more than happy to work with a lot of the recommendations. We would love to see the recommendations come through. And as Steve had said, our, our board does have some brand-new members who are really energetic. But our board does have some older members who, I'm not going to say have stayed past their time, but I think that they're just kind of at their wits' end because the fair with each year has gone down. And why, we don't really know. We're working on that now. We have, we are working with the Cincinnati Public Schools District with Dale Mallory and Tony Stalbuck of 4-H. And Tony, or Dale Mallory is with FFA. And we've managed to bring both back. And we are hoping that with bringing back the school, the school programs, it's going to give, it's going to give the fairgrounds a whole new just venue as far as we are now serving the children, which is what the Agriculture Society is all about.
Thank you. So can you help us? I'm trying to remember, I've been to the fair, I think it was last year or the year before. What happened this year?
The governor shut us down.
Yeah, so there was no fair.
We, we did not have enough children that were going to participate to have a junior fair. So we made the decision to just cancel the entire fair.
Okay, because 4-H is doing something still at Strickers, is that right?
That's correct. The 4-H that we're getting, that we have brought back into the Hamilton County Fairgrounds is a STEM and it's mostly science, fiber arts, photography, and like horticulture, like planting and so forth. I believe that the kids who have livestock will probably stay out at Strickers Grove because they have much more room. And the children that are actively participating in 4-H are children from that region.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the overview and the reaction of the Ag Society to the task force recommendations. And I know you were on the task force. So you're, you're very familiar with the recommendations, of course. And we're, you know, I think as a board, and let me just speak for myself. I am very excited about the future of the fair and how we can do some upgrades, do some kind of level set by way of kind of social media, new fencing, the kinds of things that you mentioned. But also try to create partnerships related to urban farming, the kids that you mentioned, the school kids, and try to make sure that these really strong partnerships are in place so that we're doing as much as we can with this county asset, because in the end, it's a county asset. Right. Just really make them, want to make the most of it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Commissioner Summer O'Dimmis.
Thank you, Madam President. Tanya, for all, thank you for all the work that you've done. You were talking about the fence and trying to determine who's responsible for replacing it. The barbed wire, was that an addition to the fence or that originally was done that way?
From my knowledge, that fencing has been up like fifteen years. And we, what we do is when somebody cuts through it, we put it back together. I don't know what possessed them to put barbed wire on it when they did, but it, to me, that it's been that way, like it was put on that way.
Okay. I just didn't remember it when I used to come there for the fair, but anyway. Okay, I wanted to ask, thank you, Tanya. I wanted to ask Steve, the HamiltonCountyFair.com, where does that go directly when you get on that site? Does it go directly to you when you try to fill out an application?
No, so that's the overall fair site. And so it has a bunch of information on it. If you go to the membership tab, that's where you can sign up to become a member. But it has information on the events that are taking place there, some photos from past events, a little bit of the membership of the board. So it just has general information about the fair, including how to become a member.
Okay, and I've been on there, but as it relates to the application itself, the membership, who would that go to once I put in to be a member? It would go to Tanya? Okay, so that's what I was trying to determine. Did it go to a Hamilton County employee or who it went to? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes, so, Tanya, Steve, thank you so much for your hard work. I'm excited about the possibilities. I think that our fair, which is something that I hold fond memories of when I was growing up and I look forward to my grandchildren spending time there. So, but I have a couple of questions. Does the, does the Ohio State University Extension, are you guys, are they involved with you guys? And so this is where the livestock, the kids involved in that, this is where the livestock comes from?
Yes, ma'am. That's Tony Stalbuck with OSU Extension. And Dale Mallory, I believe, is just Cincinnati Public Schools. But OSU and Tony Stalbuck are the extension who will be handling through Cincinnati Public. This was, this was a program that they enacted, they began to enact last year. And when we reached out, we reached out to him, he reached out to us through the task force. And we were like, we want, we want to do this. We want to get this back together. And I'm very excited about this. I'm an avid quilter, so I can't wait to get my hands on these kids. To, to do things like you, you're an avid fairgoer. So you remember going into the buildings where there were quilts and there were projects. And that's what we want. That's what we want to open this back up to youth so that not only for the fair, but so that they have the same memories and they have them actually doing things at the fair.
I think that this is a, an awesome collaboration with two of our organizations to partner together with the OSU Extension. So Denise and Stephanie, you guys remember, you know, they have a really strong membership and it just really makes sense for them to work together and for, this is an example of, of different organizations coming together in order to make the dream work. Teamwork makes the dream work. So, so that, and Steve, so that's awesome. Glad to see that. And Steve, so what is involved in becoming a member? So is there a membership fee? Is there a list of qualifications? If I go in here, I can just be a member?
So there is a fee. It's twenty-five dollars a year. That does get you some benefits. I think some ability to attend some days of the fair. I think that's correct.
It gives you the ability to, for, to attend the fair for all four days and parking.
Yes, so that's a pretty good benefit.
For twenty-five bucks?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So, and then I think.
Like Houston left at least fifty bucks.
And so it also, you have to be a Hamilton County resident, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's probably the only restriction I understand. And then, once you're a member, then you're eligible to get nominated to be on the board, the Agricultural Society Board. So, and then to actually complete that nomination, you have to have ten members sign your petition. So ten members of the Agricultural Society sign your petition and then you're eligible to be elected to the board at the annual meeting, at the election.
That's cool. Okay, thank you.
Go on, go on.
So, so let's, let's talk about the, the plans down the road and what needs to happen in order for new buildings and for that, you know, that roundabout for the entrance. So, so in terms of membership, your board and fundraising capacity, what are the plans that you guys have in mind to make those things happen? So, so I'm thinking that you have a capital campaign coming up.
Um, we are, we are currently working on that, honestly. I don't want to say we're, we're, don't have an ironclad plan at this time. I think our beginning plan was to make this, to be able to generate more income, to be able to rent out the fairgrounds more often, to do better at the fair and hopefully apply for more grants and so forth to get some of these improvements made. We get little to no funding from outside sources. So with that being said, our rental and our storage is what sustains us through the year. Fortunately, this year we did get a fifty thousand dollar grant from, from the state to do some capital improvements. But other than that, we get minimal amounts from different entities like the O D A and the OFMA. And we do get, I believe we get twenty-four hundred dollars from the commissioner's office per year. It literally costs, not, not to whine and complain because that's not what I'm doing. It cost us roughly ten thousand dollars a month to sustain the fairgrounds between the electric, the water, and other utilities. We're paying storm drainage of over fifteen hundred dollars a month to Greater Cincinnati Water Works, which is, I know that that's in House Bill six sixty-five to try to do away with that for the fairgrounds. It hasn't passed yet, I don't believe. But so, some of the things that the task force said about like the storage of the cars, they, the storage of the cars literally pays us, each company is like twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's what sustains the fairgrounds for the year when it's the winter time and we can, you know, we previously could not rent out any of the buildings. So this is a long-term, like what you would say, five-year plan.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm excited about the capacity and what, 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 what can be done. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So on that, along those lines, Tanya, so is there, should we anticipate a strategic plan or a master plan coming forward to address some of the financial concerns as you just laid them out? And it would also have to be coupled, I guess, with an attempt to increase the attendance at the fair to help with the financial picture?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We have, we are, we have worked on restructuring the fair. And we know that there are a lot of things that have, that in the past have transpired during the fair, at the fair, in the planning of the fair that have been changed. This year, we, we had, we had a fair plan that we had projected to double what they had had in the last like five to seven years. And unfortunately, it didn't happen. So we still have the same ride company. We have totally changed ride companies where the admission was going to be raised. However, the rides, there were going to be no ride bans. And if you've been to the fair, you know that that's been a conflict forever, where they paid to get into the fair, they paid to park. And then, and then they were paying like twenty-five dollars for a ride ban for their kids to ride. We did away with that with a new contract with a new ride company. So there, it's like starting small to get to the bigger picture.
And were there people that were on the task force that might be willing to partner? I mean, I think that's one of the things we heard at our previous meeting was that there were members of the task force that are willing to continue to serve and to make sure that if a strategic plan is put in place, then we, obviously, it'll take some resources to do some of what we've been talking about, you know, and who are those partnerships? How can we be helpful? How can we kind of continue the momentum, I guess, is what I'm asking. So what is the timing for a strategic plan so that, you know, we can hopefully participate in that and try to bring partners to the table?
Kathleen Norris has mentioned that she would be more than happy to help us in any way. Other than that, mostly from the task force, we haven't heard from anyone else.
Okay.
We did reach out to several people and timing was bad because of COVID and they were laid off and so forth. So that, I'm, I'm a big person where I'm going to give you some time and then I'm going to call you. Steve Johns will tell you that. I don't, I'm not, it's not that I'm impatient.
No, it's a good thing.
You know, it's like if I haven't heard from you, I'm going to call and find out. Now, I do know that Vanessa White had sponsored some paint to paint one of the barns and so forth. So it's not, I think that everything is just so fresh that a lot of the people in the task force that volunteered to help in any way just have not had time to put it into action because literally it was, what, two weeks ago? That the task force recommendations came out. So at this point, we're ready to move forward and to start planning, you know, the future plan.
Okay, Madam President, thank you, Tanya, but the strategic plan obviously is a necessity. Steve, I was wondering, are any of our people going to do an assessment on the cost for capital improvement in that area?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, I've reached out to UC DAP to have them look at doing a master plan for the physical site. I think Commissioner Dries might be talking as well when she's talking about strategic plan, about how do we build up the finances and all that. So that would be a bit more comprehensive. One of the places we wanted to start was what is on the site? What is the condition of all those buildings? What would the cost be to update them or upgrade them? So that we can start to pick them off one by one, kind of like Tanya said. So that's been our first move is to find some resources on the cheap, so to speak, you know, a student project or something to help with that first step, understanding what do we have on the site? What's in good shape? What can we exploit and use for rental and things like that? And then what do we need to find some money to fix up?
Are they able to determine the cost, though, of that, whatever improvement they indicate?
So it depends on which group we get. If we get the architecture students up there, then that's part of what they're learning is about is actually cost estimating on construction.
Right. And then, go ahead. They are great. They did a great project in Lincoln Heights and just completely laid out where businesses and restaurants and things should go. They are, they are awesome with their work that they do.
Yeah, so we're in the initial stages of that, so I don't want to overpromise and overdeliver. But we do have a meeting this Friday with the leadership there ahead of that so we can find out if this is a good fit for them.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and along those lines, I wonder if, and Tanya, you would know this, as we talk about some of the income streams that you have that are regular monthly pays and you talked about the cars, which the community sees as a bit of an eyesore. So we need to try to figure out. which the community sees as a bit of an eyesore. So, uh, we need to try to figure out if, if that were to not be, um, one of the revenue streams and the cars were to go, what could we bring into the space that would generate that same kind of revenue on, on a monthly basis? So how can that, because what I heard Kathleen say was there was some contemplation about the site itself, but not only whether or not it's a good site for the fair, but whether or not the land utilization makes sense. And if we can bring in, um, some partners that would be there year round, that would generate some income. Uh, and what those, you know, I, and I don't remember specifically what the, the, the examples were. But it, it seems to me that maybe there are such partners. Maybe it's not people that store cars, but maybe it's, um, farmers or beekeepers or something that's more relevant to the Ag Society. And maybe we can help think through some of that too, so that we don't lose partnership opportunities. Um, and so Steve, I hope the DAP students will not only evaluate the buildings, but the land and the configuration of the buildings and you know, and, and I heard that, that all the, uh, land is needed because during the fair, you need it for parking. Um, and so, you know, is, is, does that make sense? Is there another way to get to that? So all of these things, um, I think should be in the hopper. Um, because, you know, we, again, the, the county has a real asset here. And I think we need to maximize, um, you know, how we use the asset to the benefit of the community during the fair, during some of the other things that you program and on, right? Um, so that's kind of what I'm thinking by way of a strategic plan and kind of out of the box thinking related to partnerships. So I guess the assessment is first and then maybe, um, contemplation of how we might bring others in. Is that right, Steve? Is that what you're thinking?
I, I think it, it can all kind of start to happen at once and be opportunistic about it, you know, and when we've got, um, things that, uh, seem like a great opportunity, like the election that's coming up, um, like, uh, the potential for students to help out, uh, grants. I, I think I have to applaud the Ag Society on getting that $50,000 grant from the state. Uh, just being nimble, uh, to pick off those recommendations as best we can as we, uh, move forward.
Okay, great. Tanya, do you have any parting thoughts for us?
Not really. I mean, it just, we're moving, I know it appears like we're moving slowly. However, we we just know that there's a lot of changes that need to be made. And we are, you know, we are working on them little bits at a time. And any help that we can get is wonderful. You know, um, you are, you are dealing with people who work nine to five jobs other than the Agriculture Society as well. So the time that they give is basically their spare time. So the monthly meeting is probably the most that the entire board is together at one time. So it's, you know, I'm not saying that we're not trying. I'm just simply stating that when you have like four people who are consistently working together to try to make some changes, it takes a little bit of time to do it.
Yep.
You guys are doing a great job. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, you are.
Tanya, that meeting is the second Thursday of each month.
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you want to join, if you want to become a member, I promise you, Holly will tell you, I send out the membership card that day.
All right, we're all going to the website.
Thank you.
You'll have three new members by the end of the day.
That's awesome. That'll put us at 54 members for the year.
There we go. Oh, and, and the goal is what?
A hundred, but we're not there.
Okay, all right, very good. All right. Thanks, Tanya. Thanks for all that you're doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. All right. Let's move on to our next agenda item. So, um, this is a discussion related to utility assistance for Hamilton County residents. Uh, so Jeff is on, Holly is on, and we've got Mark Lawson on from the Hamilton County Community Action Agency. Hello, Mark. Welcome. Um, so we thought it might be important to have this conversation to remind people of not only the assistance that's available through the CARES Act funding that the commissioners approved of. Um, and that assistance is still available for rent and utilities primarily through our partners, which are CAA, Pre-Store Food Bank and Talbert. Uh, and we, we will flash those, uh, contacts up if necessary, but um, wanted to just make sure that people were utilizing those resources, going to get that assistance and also contacting the utility company to make sure that they've got a plan in place. Um, so that those bills can be, get paid in a timely fashion. So Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to you first. Um, to give a little bit of an overview and then Mark, um, turn it to you to let us know how it's going over at the CAA related to that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Well, I think you, you did a really good job of, of teeing it up. I think is, as the board is well aware, um, since the start of the pandemic, uh, the county has, um, taken action through its CARES Act allocation to address a, a host of needs. Whether it's, uh, small business assistance, whether it is home, uh, sheltering for the homeless, uh, whether it's workforce development, um, assistance with folks who need, um, uh, help with, with paying rent. Um, unfortunately, as we continue to address issues, other issues keep, keep popping up. And so uh, one of the issues that, um, has been spurred by the, the, that continues to be spurred by the pandemic uh, and that has some ur, timing urgency to it, uh, is the issue of individuals and, uh, having difficulty making, uh, making utility payments. Uh, Duke Energy in particular, uh, took action to suspend uh, their disconnects and, and waiving late fees and things of that nature early on in the pandemic. But as they are moving now back towards, uh, their normal billing practices, uh, they are going to be, uh, moving away from suspending disconnects, at least as it relates to residential customers as of tomorrow. I think they actually started, uh, doing non-residential disconnects, um, about a week ago or so, I think, or, or, or last Thursday. So there's some real timing urgency to this and getting word out to people as to what they can do, programs they can access and how they can go about engaging with Duke to make sure that if they are in arrears on their bill, uh, if they are having trouble making payments, um, that they are contacting folks that can help. Uh, so it, to that end, um, and we've got some contact information for Duke that we'll, uh, put up towards the end of, of this, uh, of this item. Uh, but we really wanted to turn it over to, to Mark with the Community Action Agency, uh, whose agency, not only, as you indicated, Madam President, um, is one of our contractual partners as it relates to our rental and utility assistance program, uh, but also manages a lot of the, the different programs that people can access to, to gain some assistance here. Uh, so without any additional, uh, ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mark. And then as we wrap it up, uh, we will, uh, post some of the information on how people can contact Duke directly for payment plans and assistance that type. So, Mark?
Thank you, Jeff, and, and thank you, President Dreas, Commissioner Sumer Dumas and Commissioner Parks for having me and, uh, and to Jeff and, and your, uh, amazing team, Holly Christman, Michelle Balls and Joy Pearson, helping us, uh, get the money out and, and recognizing the need, um, for our clients. And, uh, we're seeing a huge increase in the need and a lot of clients, um, frankly, have lost their jobs and industries aren't coming back and are not used to navigating the social service system. Um, and so the utility crisis is huge. Um, as Jeff said, the disconnects are starting tomorrow. Um, so not only is that a utility crisis, it's a housing crisis because you're, you're liable to use your rental housing if you don't have utilities. And now it's an educational crisis. Uh, because all of our kids that are online, uh, learning remotely are apt to lose their, their access to their schools. So it's, it's a serious problem. We are ramping up at C A as much as we can to help folks. Um, Jeff mentioned the CARES money, that's for rental assistance and utility assistance. We've got about 2,000 folks in the pipeline right now. So does Talbert House. Um, waiting to get through, even though we've, we've cross-trained folks and, and hired new people, um, it's still difficult to get through. And we've asked, uh, Duke whether they could put a pause on those folks waiting. Um, and they, they've found that that is not workable. Um, so we cannot do that, but we are going to try to keep moving forward. Um, it's important, um, note that Duke is offering repayment plans, nine-month repayment plans with no down payment. So that is something new. They've in the past always required a down payment. Um, so, um, that in conjunction with some of the programs we offer, including the CARES Act money, you've got to have a decreased income, uh, due to COVID, um, to be able to be eligible for that amount of money. But that can be used in conjunction with a down payment plan, uh, a down pay, with no down payment and a repayment plan. So that helps reduce the, the, the amount you've got to pay each month, which is important. Um, this can also be used in conjunction with our other programs, um, which is HEAP, uh, Home Energy Assistance Program that we've been running for since the seventies. Um, there's the, the, the summer crisis, uh, has been extended to the end of September. And so we're able to help folks with $500, up to $500, um, on their utility bill, whether to reconnect or it could be used, uh, to help, um, with this repayment plan. And you can use these pots of money together. If you happen to have a decreased income that's COVID-related, you could use, uh, the CARES Act money with, uh, the summer crisis money. Um, there's all different eligibility requirements. It, you know, the CARES Act money is 80% of, of area median income and and the other programs are 175% of federal poverty guidelines. And so it's a little confusing to folks. The, the best thing to do is just have people call us or email us. Um, and, and if you don't have that, uh, if you don't have that to post up there, our, our number is 513-569-1850. Or EPA at C hyphen C A A dot O R G. That gets you to the CARES Act money. And it doesn't matter how you come. Our folks are trained at, at C A to get you in the right spot. Um, and there's also PIP, so payment, uh, you know, payment income per plan for utilities, um, you can get on that and uh, you pay a percentage of your income for utilities. And if you have on-time payments for 24 months, uh, you can wipe out your arrears. So that's huge. And we could use crisis money towards that to get you reconnected to PIP. Um, the last thing, uh, as far as programs is Project Lift. Um, that, that is out there too, and that's available to folks, uh, that have kids in the household um, and are working or have a plan to work. It's very flexible money. That's up to 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. And the, the big requirement, other than having a child in the household, is that uh, you've got to want to stay with us for a year, um, and work with us to break down barriers. And that can be all sorts of things, but does include utilities. Um, so that's available too. So there's a whole host of programs that we're trying to, to pitch out there to help folks, uh, you know, get through it. Difficult times for everybody. Um, but that's sort of everything in a nutshell. I know that's complicated. If you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer, um, if I wasn't clear enough.
So thanks, Mark, and thanks, Jeff. So, um, in these programs, some of them are for folks that are renting, rental assistance, obviously, uh, utility assistance. And some of them are also for homeowners, right, who are also struggling. So I just want to make sure that, uh, and, and a call to C A can help you distinguish one from the other because some of them are obviously for one or the other. Um, one thing I want to note that, um, Duke, um, while they are starting back up with, um, some of the disconnects, are willing and happy to work with their customers, uh, to try to create a payment plan that's workable so that people do not have their utilities cut off. And so, um, I do want to make sure that it's with that attitude that they are approaching this and trying to make sure that people do get on a payment plan and, and aren't, don't get disconnected. But the county's program, especially that CARES Act program, is specifically targeted to people who need rental or utility assistance and provide money to fill that gap. So that helps with the payment plan so that you don't have a big, huge lump sum. Um, you know, as you start to get back on your feet. So that's kind of the point of it. Um, be, and before, I don't want to lose this thought, um, this reminds me that individuals, customers of Duke have to take some action, right? They have to call Duke um, to get that payment plan in place. Um, and so it's, is it duke-energy.com? Is how you get ahold of Duke. And I know Jeff, you're going to flash that up on the screen.
Yeah, Madam President, why don't I, if I could, just real quick, share my screen and, uh, um, uh, before I do that, Mark, did you say 569-1840?
1850.
1850. All right. Well, I'm going to change this on the fly here and I'm going to share this. Uh, let's see here.
Right. So you're going to provide the contact information for both Duke and for C A, so that folks know.
Yeah. So let me know when you can see this.
There we go.
Okay, so, uh, you have the resident, there's two lines for Duke. There's the residential line and the residential website address. Uh, there's also the non-residential, which again, as I said, those shut offs started last week. Uh, and then I added the Community Action Agency down here at 513-569-1850. So uh, again, uh, multiple ways for folks who, um, whether they're, um, in a residential or a non-residential environment to take advantage of some programs, uh, to, uh, make arrangements, um, if they are, uh, either in arrears or having trouble uh, paying their, uh, paying their u, utility bills right now.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, Commissioners, uh, comments, questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, Mark, for all that you do. Um, just a, a couple of comments. Um, and the payment plan is excellent, uh, if you have money to pay. But at least they made that an option if you have a little bit of money. But my concern, Madam President, and I'm wondering what we can do about it, is when Mark mentioned about the 2,000 clients that are in the pipeline and he, um, asked Duke if they could put a hold on them because they will be supplemented. Um, just wondering if we could, as a commission, um, send a letter, not a letter or a phone call, if you could make a phone call, Madam President, to Duke specifically and ask them, instead of Mark just kind of doing it on his own, and asked him about the 2,000 that we know will be supplemented with, um, extra, uh, monies that if he could or if they could hold, uh, out for those 2,000 clients. Um, I know he's asked, they said no, but I'm just wondering if we could also ask.
Yeah. So Mark, I would have to have a better understanding of what that 2,000 represents. If, if those folks are all going to get the assistance or if they're, if you're vetting them to find out whether or not they're eligible.
Right. So, so we, we would have, we still have to vet those folks and, and some of them are just sitting there. Some would not be eligible. Some would only need rental assistance and not utility assistance. And my pitch to Duke was that we would have to vet those first, but we wouldn't just send you a, a list of 2,000 cold. We would figure out who is eligible, um, for, for utility assistance as opposed to just wanting rental assistance or otherwise ineligible because they're not, uh, COVID-related.
And, and, and how long do you think that vetting process may take place? I know you said you'd hire more people and all of that. So.
Albert House and us, uh, you know, I think we're getting through 300 folks a week.
Okay.
The best we can do, the best we're trying to do.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
One more thing I forgot to mention, this is important, I'm sorry. But the, um, the winter rule is in effect, uh, starting October 5th, and that is where you can reconnect um, your utilities with a $175 payment. Um, and then, and then C A has that $175 payment available, but not until November 1st, when the winter starts. The winter rule is in effect October 5th, uh, to get reconnected and, and 175 is available from C A starting November 1st.
You know, Mark, so this, well, let, let's go to Commissioner Parks first, then I'm going to ask you another question about capacity. Commissioner Parks?
Okay, so it looks like the summer is extended until 9/28. And then winter starts at October 5th.
This, well, the summer crisis is the end of the month, September 30th. Um, winter crisis starts November 1st, but the, the winter rule starts October 5th. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there. The winter rule says that, that's an Ohio rule that says that you can reconnect your utilities by just paying $175 if you were disconnected. But the winter crisis doesn't kick in until November 1st, when, when that 175 becomes available to be handed out by C A to eligible clients.
I see. Okay, um, I just hope that, um, that people will connect with you. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about, uh, people who have been laid off and lost their means of making a living. So I'm, I'm just hopeful. And thank you for you doing.
And, and Madam President, if, if I, if I could, um, while we're talking and the focus of the, of our conversation today is on, uh, primarily on Duke Energy customers, also want to remind, um, folks out there that, um, you know, it's obviously Duke is not the only utility out there where people could fall in arrears. Um, and Waterworks, which handles the billing for both water and the Metropolitan Sewer District. Um, I don't believe that they are, have reinstituted shut offs at this point, but that people are in arrears there. It never hurts for people who feel that they may have a problem to reach out to Waterworks as well. to reach out to Waterworks as well. They are at 591-7700. And if individuals are having trouble as it relates to their water and sewer bill, to reach out to Waterworks and discuss payment plans there also.
Well, Jeff, if I could chime in on that, because we just got some, some new community services block grant money, it's federal money, and we've allocated about 350,000 of that for water assistance because we know that's a big issue, and there really isn't a program.
Right.
That does for water and sewer help as well.
Yeah, it sounds like the message here is reach out, you know, reach out, reach out. When it comes to, you know, setting up a payment plan with Duke or whether it's providing, getting some assistance from CAA or Free Store or Talbert, people just need to get on the phone and, and reach out before it's too late, before they get in some serious trouble. So, Mark, you talked about the pipeline and the, the, the number of folks that you are vetting per week. If, do you expect that the funding that's been provided by the county is going to be adequate for the individuals that qualify for that funding?
No, there's more, there's more folks in the pipeline than there's money available. We at CA have 2.5 million, I think, now. And it depends on how many people are, are waiting in our line and might be waiting in Talbert House's line, but between us, we don't think there's still enough money to get through it. The trouble is the CARES Act money, as you know, has to be spent by the end of the year. That's a problem. So we're trying to beat some bushes and find some other money that, that would extend beyond the end of the year into the next year because we think the crisis is not really over at the end of the year. And maybe that'll get extended, maybe it won't, but, but we can hope, but.
Do you feel confident that you're going to be able to vet these individuals quickly enough that the money will be spent by the end of the year?
That is our hope, I, I believe so. I mean, we've done what we can, we've hired extra people, we've brought people over that aren't, we're not doing as much workforce development. We've retrained those folks to help out and pitch in. People are working long hours. And same, the same goes for Talbert House.
Okay, yeah, Jeff, we should probably just keep track of this because if there is a point at, in time at which we're going to see that the need far exceeds the money that's been allocated, we're going to want to revisit that. And thank you to Holly Christman, by the way, for getting us the CARES Act. I don't know if my colleagues saw it, but it's kind of a chart that gives us a, a dashboard, a moment in time as to how these funds are going, you know, what, where we see some excess, where we see an increased need and, and not enough money. And this seems to be one of those spaces, but we just don't have it yet, right? Because it's taking a while to process the individuals in the pipeline.
Madam President, if I may. One very good thing about this is CAA, it's known because of the PIP program, and I believe that people know to go to them for utility, you know, for assistance and utility payment. So, so I, so I think that that's a good thing.
And, and Madam President, I just wanted to comment when Mark indicated about the additional money for the waters, Waterworks, you have a great CAA newsletter that comes out, I read it. But as far as letting people know that that additional monies are there, and I guess I'll ask Jeff this. I know the money has to be used for COVID issues and concerns. Is there any way we could do like an advertisement to let people know? Like, for instance, what Mark was saying, I knew about the water thing because of the newsletter. I believe it was in the newsletter. But every, you know, so many people don't know, you know, we do this, we have our meetings, but how can we better advertise the monies that are available for those who don't know? To make sure we use it up, I don't think that'll be a, a problem, but the ones that are really in need, that don't listen to us, is there any way to use some of that money to better advertise?
Yeah, so we do have some money in the, in the CARES Act allocation for, for marketing towards where we dramatically increased the marketing this time around, Small Business Assistance Program. Particular time on the, on the rental assistance. We were concerned, we certainly want the, the, the word out there, but we also knew how incredibly in-demand the program was from, from the get-go and the demands at that place on our three contractual partners as well. But we can definitely work with, with Mark, with, with Talbert House and Free Store to make sure that we are, to the degree more marketing is necessary to get that word out, especially if you wind up having to supplement things, that we are getting that, that word out. And certainly even just our, our normal, you know, in normal course of business, our social media that goes out, you know, those types of standard marketing, we can ramp that up as well, to the degree we're seeing the need to, to keep plugging it out in the public.
Thank you.
And we're, we're doing a lot of marketing effort too. I've, I've personally been on Lincoln Ware Show twice, I've been on WVXU. We have Facebook Live programs where, where our, the manager of our programs go on once a week to talk about this. So we're, we're trying to do the best we can to put the word out.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And, and again, you know, just want to encourage people to reach out to all of the above, Duke in particular, to make sure that they don't get behind here or, or have a shut-off situation. It reminds me also, it doesn't hurt to mention that the same holds true with evictions, where if people feel as though, now, now the CDC has halted evictions, however, people still will have to pay that rent. Maybe not now, but it accumulates, and once that is gone, that will have stacked up. And so we want to make sure that people are contacting either the self-help clinic over at the courthouse to make sure, again, that they've got a plan here for that. Or, you know, we, people just need to be, be reaching out because I think the fear is that once everything kind of opens back up again, there's going to be accumulation of debt, and it's going to be hard to dig out for everybody that's really struggling right now. So, all right, very good. Thank you for the information. Is there anything else, Mark, that you, we need to know?
No, but you make a good point about the moratorium. It only works if, if you get in, in our line or Talbert House's line now. Don't wait, get in line now. That'll help us and help you, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Anything else, Jeff, on this topic?
Nothing else, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Mark, thanks for jumping on, thanks for your help with our, our program. All right, we have completed what's on our agenda. Commissioners, is there anything further?
I have nothing.
I have one thing. On September 15th, we remember four little girls killed in the 16th Street Baptist Church bombing in Birmingham. They were Addie Mae Collins, Carol Robertson, Cynthia Wesley, and Denise McNear. The tragedy happened 57 years ago today in 1963.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the reminder, Commissioner. All right, if there is then nothing further, I am going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumur Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye.
Bye.